Okay, thank you very much and welcome to this meeting of the Audit and Standards Committee. Can I request, and I'll remember to do it myself, that mobile phones are switched off or on to silent? And so we don't disturb the meeting. It is now being live streamed to the public and so can you indicate clearly to me when you want to speak? And remember to use your microphone that is switched on. There's no fire test plan for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and the assembly point is due to square. Can I now just do a quick round of introductions of everybody in the room for the benefit of those that are viewing us remotely as well? I'm councillor Colin Ross, I'm the chair of today's meeting. And if we go around this way, starting with councillor Tom Hunt.
Thanks Chair, I'm councillor Tom Hunt.
Councillor Kevin Oxley, councillor from Mosbury.
Councillor Simon Clement-Jones, councillor Beecham Green.
Linda Hunter, Senior Finance Manager, Inter audit and Risk Management.
Councillor Angela Argentio, Brumhill and Charwell Ward.
Okay, that was the two external auditors at the back and now getting their microphones turned on. Okay, thanks very much.
Jane Wilby, Head of the Council.
Ruth Matheson, Finance, Managing Finance and Commercial Services.
Ryan Key with Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Jay Baldwin, Credit Services Officer.
Alison Howard, Independent Co-opted Member.
David Hollis, Assistant Director, Legal and Governance.
And Gillian Depp with Director of Legal and Governance.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much. Apologies for absence. Apologies, before we do those apologies, we've got two people on attending virtually this. So could you introduce yourselves please? David, start.
David Waxman, got the title of independent person, which is to do with work in relation to the Councillor's Code of Conduct.
And I'm Karen Woodson, I'm the new independent person.
Okay, thank you very much and apologies again for the oversight of the screen. Okay, item two on the agenda is apologies for absence. Jay, have we had any apologies?
Yes, Jay, I received one apology from councillor Ben Coram.
Item three is declarations, no, sorry, item three is exclusion of present public. Well, there aren't any items on today's agenda that require us to exclude the present public. Item four is declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items on today's business agenda? No, okay, so no declarations of interest. Item five, minutes of the previous meeting, which are in our reports pack. Can we, well, first of all, are there any issues from these minutes? And can we approve them as a correct record of the previous meeting held on the 28th of July? I'm getting nods of a sense, so yes, so we can approve them. And just to note that I think some of the actions that were highlighting that have been carried out, that have been highlighted under 4.2 and 4.3, those have been followed up and done. And I will point out on 5.3, the figure wasn't 361,000, it was 361 million. But that was a typo, but quite a large typo error in that. Okay, can we now then move on to the first really substantive item on the agenda, which is the External Audit Plan for 2122?
Thank you Chair. So what I'll do is I'll just give a high level intro and I'll actually hand over to Dan to take us through some of the detail. But we set out our audit and planning report for the forthcoming audits, that's the 2122 financial statements. We've set out our risk assessment upfront, which you'll see largely shows that there hasn't been any substantial movement in those risks during the year with exception of infrastructure assets and I'm sure Dan will touch on that shortly. We set out our materiality levels, which we've calculated in the same way that we have done in previous years. We haven't yet felt it's appropriate to increase the level that we perform our work to, which is our performance materiality levels, just because some of the findings that we found year on year. The only other element that I will briefly touch on before handing over to Dan is just on page 32 of our document, we set out our timeline. So we have already done some planning procedures and walkthrough procedures and have started some of the year end work. The bulk of the year end audit though starts in October and will go through to December. And what we'll do is we'll bring our audit results report to the committee in January with the aim to sign shortly thereafter. One point of clarity that I just wanted to set out is there's an auditor's annual report that is due and scheduled to come in March. We will have hoped to assign the financial statements in the January period. That report is actually just a summary of our work and also the value for money commentary. So I just wanted to clarify that we're not, it's not full reporting and signing in March, we're hoping to have done that a couple of months earlier. So what I'll do now is I'll just hand over to Dan.
Thanks Hayley. And so I'm going to refer to the page numbers in my report, so hopefully you've got the same page numbers in your pack. So we're going to start on page five, which outlines the risks that we've highlighted for SCC's audit this year. So those risks go over two pages, pages five and six. Broadly similar to most years that we've been your auditor. And as Hayley touched on, there is one that we do want to bring attention to tonight, which is at the bottom of page five. So that is the valuation of highways infrastructure assets. Now this is an issue that has emerged nationally, so isn't specific to yourselves, but all authorities that have highways infrastructure assets, so what we're here, authorities and metropolitan boroughs. And now this relates to where the accounting for these assets hasn't really kept up to date with the real life scenario that happens for how these assets are treated. Now, it is quite a technical issue, but it does have the opportunity to have quite a big impact in terms of financial figures on your accounts and we'll be looking at these quite soon into our, into our audit. So the assets that relate to roads, bridges, anything that you can think of that you kind of use in your day to day life as part of the infrastructure of Sheffield City. And the accounting issue is that assets aren't necessarily written out at the stage that they are either replaced or improved upon or perhaps completely fully depreciated. Now, say, very technical issue and I'm sure you'll all go about your day to day lives with, in the same fashion. You won't be too particularly worried that the roads that you walk on immediately need to be replaced if they've been written out in the fix asset register. But due to, due to the issues that have emerged, we will need to get some assurance that the audit is able to identify assets within that and that there's more detail on page 14, if you do want to go into that, and I think we'll probably just take questions if they arise at the end of my brief presentation on this report. Page seven is our materiality levels. So this is what we use our formulas for to generate what we believe the materiality figure for your authority is. So this doesn't mean that anything under 28 million pounds is irrelevant. But it's the level at which that we would suggest that if we find a balance or a disclosure is out by that much, that we would say that your accounts aren't correct enough for us to sign off on. And in order to do that, we set a level called performance materiality, which is 50% of that, which we utilise for our testing to ensure that we can identify any errors that might lead to that materiality figure. And taking a broad brush, we've decided as a committee, you'll be interested in knowing all the errors that we identify over 1.44 million. Later on in this report, we do set these out a bit more detail and we do ask you to know those figures tonight. On page nine is, as if seeing Hayley and I in person wasn't enough, you get a photograph of us in this report as well. Page 14 is the infrastructure assets that I spoke around. So that does go into a lot of the detail and the work that we will do to meet that risk. The final page that I wanted to draw your attention to as a committee is page 22. So this is, our work has two strands, so we look at risks associated with your financial statements, but also provide commentary and reports by exception if we identify anything that we would bring to your attention in regards to your value for money. And these are the three areas that we have identified as having the opportunity to lead to material weakness in those arrangements. Now, obviously you'll all, you'll all be fully aware that when Ryan presents, all of his reporting to yourselves, that there is risks around financial sustainability across the sector. And as a result of those challenges that you face, certainly not unique as an authority in that, in those regards, but we will assess the financial sustainability of the authority. And then there are, there are two other areas, one of which will be familiar to anybody who was on the committee last year in regards to regeneration programmes, so West Bar and Heart of the City. So we'll continue to look at the governance arrangements around those. And also looking a bit further ahead on the horizon, the reconfiguration of the leisure facilities in 2024. So the Sheffield City Trust will be ceasing to have those assets and we'll be looking at what you are doing as a council to either repatriate those or other arrangements that you may be coming to. And so we'll be specifically looking at the governance arrangements and decisions that are being made in relation to those. So say there is a lot more in the report, but none that I was intending to go into too much detail on. I suppose welcome any questions for Hayley and myself at this point.
Okay, I've got Simon first then, Angela.
Thank you very much for that. We've just had a whole presentation on what can go wrong in councils and ended up with statutory intervention, so it is kind of on our minds, so that may be where the questions are coming from. You say, on the, on the point you just made on 22, I'm really wondering what the timetable on, where the kind of pressure points, if you like, are, when, you know, when, when the audit committee, when councillors, when, when everyone might, might see, you know, sort of the outcome of your look at the 2022 outturn and performance against budget and the MTFS. I wonder if you can kind of see over the next, you know, where are we now, until the March, where, where we might look to see where, you know, the pinch points are, if you like, in that, in the work that you're doing. And, you know, when you've completed stuff to be able to say definitively that we're all okay or not, as the case may be. Thank you.
Yeah, so our work will, has commenced and will continue to, continue to do so over the next few months. So we'll be looking at the value for money side of things at the same time that we're running the financial accounts or the financial statements opinion audit. So our findings will be formally reported as part of the audit results report that we would be bringing to the January committee. And then we have the VFM commentary that would then run after that into the March, March committee. I suppose if there was anything that we identified that we felt that you needed to be aware of sooner, then clearly we would talk to Ryan and Jane and the rest of the finance team about that, discuss it and then talk about bringing that to you to an earlier committee if we felt the need to. I'm not foreseeing that at the moment, but I appreciate it is obviously a key area and at forefront of minds. But we'll follow due process and make sure we bring it to you if there is anything we need to identify sooner.
Cracking, thank you.
Angela next.
Yes, sort of on the same topic in terms of the risks coming from the financial situation we are in and particularly linked with social care and children. And obviously your outlook is, is backwards, so you're looking at last financial year. Yeah, but we already know what's happening this year. So I wonder at what point do your alarm bells start chiming in that area? Because it's not for lack of ambition in terms of how our budget has been set out and wanting to save as quickly as possible in those areas, but it's achieving those savings that is the very tricky thing due to historical overspend and, and the funding, you know, going back 10, 15 years. So how can we as an audit committee support the council moving forward, but at the same time not getting to the point where we have to ring our alarm bells?
Yeah, so just, I agree, we are, we are always looking backwards. But I suppose with the value for money element and following changes in the code back in 2020, we do also have a responsibility to keep an eye on what is currently happening as well. So we, we actually have regular catch-ups with Ryan throughout, throughout the financial year. So whilst we are still focused on 2122, you know, we are still looking at what is happening in 2223. And obviously as part of the, because we're looking at the arrangements in place in any given year, part of the arrangement we're then looking at are the budget setting processes. That's always naturally going to capture part of what the planning is for the forthcoming financial year. So you'll get some assurances from us in regard to that. I think just because we are looking backwards on some of the time in the reports, it doesn't mean that if we don't identify something that is happening now, we've still got a responsibility to obviously raise that and bring that to your, your attention as required. But at the moment, I'm not seeing, whilst we've got these as identified risks, and I think that is the way to look at it, there are identified risks as significant weaknesses, we're not yet flagging that there is a significant weakness in the way that your arrangements are currently working.
Okay, thank you for that. You can tell that a previous presentation was about horror shows of where has it gone wrong in councils. So we're, we're very keen that if you do pick up anything in the, what's currently happening, that we're alerted to it as soon, as soon as possible. Ryan, and then I'll bring in Tom.
Thanks Chair. I think it's, I think it's really good that members are asking these kind of questions. I suppose just, just a request from me in terms of the sequencing and timing. Members are going to be asked to sign off the 234 budget in March. It would be immensely helpful if there were any issues from, from external audit side, if they could be flagged in some way in advance of that, so that, you know, members of this committee are able to provide assurance to their, to their, to their member colleagues when they're voting on the budget in March, that nothing that they've been told so far gives them any cause for concern, or if it does, then here is, here it is. I suppose it's just that, just that, that sequencing might be, might only appear to be a couple of weeks on the timetable and make quite a lot of difference to the members' actions in March.
Thank you, thank you. Tom?
I think, Hayley, do you want to come back? No, okay, all right, thank you Chair, and thanks for the report and presentation. I just wanted to come back to this new significant risk that you've highlighted around valuation of highways infrastructure assets. I'm new to the committee, but perhaps this is a new issue to everybody. So could you just talk a little bit more about kind of what that practically kind of means? I'm struggling a little, I suppose, about what depreciation of a highways asset kind of looks like in practice. We're talking about a, a road here over the lifetime of it. And then related to that, we're a city that has had significant investment in highways over the last 10 years. Appreciate you saying this is an issue that's been picked up for national, the national situation, but is the risk greater in Sheffield because of that investment programme over the last 10 years?
So I think it is a, it is a very technical issue. So what I don't want to do is go down that rabbit hole, so to speak, but I'm more than happy to have separate conversations afterwards. I think essentially it comes down to a couple of elements. It's mainly the valuation of the assets as they currently sit on the balance sheet. So you would incur expenditure, you capitalise it, you'll have a depreciation policy that runs its course, so it depreciates year on year. Where this issue has effectively arisen is that if you then resurface a road, for example, is the old road that you, you spent your money on fully depreciated? Or are you capitalising on top of something that you've torn up and replaced? And I suppose that's the crux of where this issue originally arose. What that's then done is it's sort of, you know, it's like if you pull on a, pull on a bit of yarn, it's just unraveled slightly to then say, well, actually, when you then go back to look at the books and records within an organisation, particularly one of this side, and that there are a lot that are a similar size across the country, because of the historic nature of some of these assets, not all of the information is either, has been kept or has been kept in one place. So you've then got questions around, well, can you even identify what those assets are that you're holding on your balance sheet? And that's where the issue is. I think for organisations similar to yourselves, you're right, you do have a huge investment in infrastructure. It doesn't necessarily mean that the risk is greater for you than it would be for others. It really is going to come back to how accurate are those records and how far can you go back? And are assets readily identifiable? But that's something we're going to be looking at quite quickly on in the audit to try and get a grasp over that. But there are, there are consultations underway at the moment with SIPF and they are looking for a way to resolve this. So they would need to come up with a resolution and then they would need to make sure that the underlying instruments are updated to enable all authorities to be able to take corrective action. And we're sort of hoping that that might be a route to explore. There are other routes to explore, I don't think we're quite there yet. So a number of authorities are working with auditors on limitation of scope just to get the opinion signed off because it is something that doesn't impact on taxpayers' funds. And I think that's probably the crucial bit to take away, which is why I said it is, it is a technical accounting issue as opposed to something that is going to, you know, financially impact on the general fund.
Thank you. When I asked some questions about this prior to the meeting, I was told it's something that some people are getting very excited about, but not really. It's, you know, a road is a road, it's not going to be sold or whatever, it's basically an accountability mechanism. And Ryan, I think, attended a seminar at this, at one conference and came away not very much more enlightened about it than, than when he went in. But again, as reassured, it's not going to be a crucial issue for Sheffield. Are there any other questions arising for that? If not, can we agree to note the External Audit Plan for 2122? Getting nods and take that as the send. Thank you very much indeed, and thank you also for the assurances about ongoing alerts and things, which will be very helpful. Okay, now it is item seven on the agenda, which is the Annual Internal Audit Plan. And Linda, you'll be leading on this one, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yes, this is my Annual Internal Audit Report for 2122. What it does, it's a broad overview of the internal audit work during the year and it also supports the AGS that's later on the agenda. If I can just pull out some, some key points, on page 17, you'll find the quote of my audit opinion. And that is that I am satisfied that risk management, governance and internal controls are adequate. It also outlines that my audit plan was reactive and flexible, but I still think that the audit coverage was adequate to provide that opinion. So we had some broad coverage there. I also use the assurances from the AGS, from risk management and grant reviews that I've done. So it's quite a broad, broad areas there that are considered. Also some key areas is page 19, that outlines the professional responsibilities. So that quotes the Public Sector Internal Audit Standards. And also within there, I've got two appendices, appendix A and B, which are the Charter and the Quality Assurance and Improvement Programme. So they're the standards that I'm trying to adhere to. On page 21, that outlines the structure. Currently, there's two vacancies. The vacancies are due to internal promotions, so that's a good positive point there, we've got promotions internally. But it's likely to be two vacancies, so currently the structure on appendix C is 19.2, full time equivalents. On page 23 is the audit plan and the deliveries to 2122. There's, I'll just quote some figures here, sorry, it's 86 reviews were completed, four were work in progress, 11 were investigations that we conducted and then we assisted management with a further 28. So quite a few outputs there during, during the year. On page 25, that outlines that there were no, no assurance opinion reports issued, but we did have 12 limited assurance reviews issued. And appendix C highlights the limited assurance medium impact, what the Audit Standards Committee members get, that you get the full reports for the limited high opinion audits. We also conducted 23 business partnering pieces of work and they're quoted under appendix F. And then further outputs, we had 28 outputs that are things like follow-up reviews, grant sign-off, consultancy work, so there's no opinion for those, but there's still productive outputs that we produced during the year. And then just to raise attention as well to page 27, which is the PIs for internal audit. There's five PIs there, we hit the target for four of them. The one that we didn't quite achieve was the planned outputs during the year. So you'll note there that we achieved 86 outputs and the target was 94, which is sort of 90% of the overall plan. Some of the reasons behind that, we had a vacancy, we had a long-term sickness, we had a bit of a delay with a SIPF trainee starting with us and the release of the one that was coming in. And then also one of our SIPF trainees worked with us 50% of the time because they needed experience in another area as well, so it was a split resource there. So what I'm recommending is for the committee members to note that my opinion. And any questions?
Angela.
Thanks Linda, as ever, for a very clear report. Obviously, again, we're looking backwards, aren't we? So just on page 23, in terms of the staff working from home, could you just clarify for people that are watching what the arrangements are for that? And whether it means that people cannot do their jobs properly if they're working from home, which we know, I know that they can. It's just what kind of things need to be done in person and which kind of things can actually be done comfortably from home? And then another question is on page 25, do we have like a, a progress in terms of 55 of the limited assurance? Sorry, I don't have that appendix printed out in my pack, so it might be in the appendix, but the answer to that. But is, is there any progress on those limited assurance to our report for that? Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the, like I said, the hybrid approach of 40% working back in the office, what we're going to use that time for is more collaboration. So we're sort of using that time in the office for doing the team meetings and one-to-ones. But then also what we'll be doing is concentrating on some of the audits that we have had sort of difficulties doing during the year in lockdown. So there are examples of like the school audits, for the first year in lockdown, they were difficult doing them remotely. And the feedback from the schools were that they requested that we did them on-site. So we have reintroduced that site visits now. Another example is like the IT audits, the application audits. Again, it's easier for the auditors to actually sit there and go through a system, an IT system, and showing them how it works and which buttons to press and whatever, it's a lot easier doing it sitting down with somebody in the office. So they're the sort of areas we'll be doing when we're in the office. And then the other one was about the, the limited assurance reviews. Yeah, there's 12 there that we've given limited assurance. All the recommendations are now beyond my recommendation tracker. So as soon as we issue the report as a final, goes on the recommendation tracker, so we're tracking the progress on those recommendations. those recommendations. They also go to the performance and delivery board, and again, if they feel like they need the support, that service area, then they get called into performance and delivery to see if they need additional support or what the issues are with the implementation of those recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions? Right, Alison.
I just wanted to explore a little bit further the hybrid approach. I appreciate the 40% that your colleagues are doing, but is that the fact that the rest of the council is also adopting the hybrid approach, is that causing you any issues with access to other officers within the council?
No, it hasn't caused any issues today, and to be fair, we've got all the equipment and access to systems that we need to work from home. And we have found that people are, we have been able to get evidence and discussion meetings easier, to be fair. We've had less cancellations doing it by teams, doing it remotely, than what we have actually sometimes face-to-face, so it has actually worked, the approach. But like I say, corporately, that is the approach we're looking at, is 40% across services. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Nothing quite like looking in the whites of their eyes, is there?
Okay, thank you. Anybody got any other points they want to raise? No, in that case, can we note the content of the report and the opinion of the senior finance manager? Agreed? Agreed. Okay, thank you very much, Linda. Okay, item eight on the agenda is the formal response to audit, and Ryan and Ruth are presenting this. Is it Ruth taking the lead?
Yeah, thank you.
So the report today is to provide ourselves with managers' responses to progress on EY's prior year recommendations, following the 1920/2021 statement of accounts. So even though we're referring to the previous two financial years, it should be noted, due to amendments to statutory deadlines and extra regulations placed on external audit, that our time to respond or implement has been significantly squeezed. But we have been working with EY and they acknowledge that time to implement has been reduced. So in EY's audit report, that was presented to the committee earlier this year, there were 15 open observations, nine of which related to 1920 and six relating to 2021, which are all listed at appendix one of the report. And this is our internal update. EY will report separately on progress and recommend whether the observations remain open and then if further actions required. At the same time, EY will inform the committee of any observations identified during the 2122 audit. And as Hayley referred to earlier, that will be coming back to committee on the 19th of January. So of the recommendations that EY identified, they did rate them low or moderate, and I appreciate the printed copies are in black and white, so not so easily identified. So I'll just go through some of the key ones from 1920. The main one was the PPE, the property planning equipment, just because it's one of the largest balances on the statement of accounts. Now, we work very closely with property services and we have made significant improvements in this area in terms of the portfolio valuations that were identified and any assets that had a nil valuation at the start. The main issue that EY identified in 1920 was the formula error that we corrected. Straight after publication, we did identify it and notify EY. We've now introduced internal checks and quality assurance as a recommendation from audit committee last time, that we extended the proofreading time so that we could identify such before we published. The next key one within 1920 was probably school balances. In previous years, with the shortest timescale for close down and preparing the accounts, we had to use estimates, so sometimes providing the evidence to EY proved difficult. But for the last couple of years, we've been able to use actuals just because of the extended deadlines during Covid. And we would look to use that if ever the deadlines were brought forward again. Again, within 1920, one of the recommendations identified was expenditure and being able to, where estimates are used to base on accrues, which we do account on that basis, but there are certain items, expenditure, that we use on actuals on a 12-month rolling basis, especially for utility costs that we use 12 months, but it could be February to February rather than April to March. And we would look to work with EY on that, just because we feel that that's more reliable. For 2021, the key observations identified with EY, the first one being debtors. This is where our internal coding was on a gross basis rather than on a net basis, and we are all working with payroll, because that was the one identified by EY. So we are looking to implement that. The next key one was IFRS 16. Now, this is a new accounting standard that was coming in from first of April this year. It's actually been delayed by Sipa and is now due to be implemented from first of April 2024. So that does give us the opportunity over the next couple of years to work on implementing if we go down the route of having a system to monitor our leases and getting all the documentation available. So that does give us that opportunity. Investment properties, EY identified that there was an element of the contract that we should value, and we've actually got our valuers now to implement that, and that is within the accounts. We've already engaged with EY early to make sure that we agree the method used. The third one was members' interests, and this is where EY did additional checks other than the declarations of interest and identified possible other interests. So we've now implemented those extra steps of checking, and we identified a couple this year and we've implemented that there were no related parties within the system. We've also, as a result, worked with Legal and Democratic Member Services just to provide extra training, there's been updates from the team, and they also introduced monthly newsletters with reminded members to check their forms if any things have changed. But again, that assurance is there that there were no related party transactions resulting from that. A next one was just to provide quality assurance. Now, this is one that members of the committee were interested in, in that once we'd published, we had, in part of 2021, we then identified some presentational errors or just improvements to disclosure notes. This year, we took that on board and we extended the review period. So even though we could have finished earlier and published the public earlier, we took that extra time and did any changes that were necessary. The final one, leases, now this refers back to the IFRS 16 implementation that is part of the system and implementation of that standard, is to ensure that all documentation was available. And that is what we're using these extra couple of years to introduce, for example, one of the lease deeds from 1934 was not available at that time, but we add other information available to prove that that did exist. But we are working with property services to ensure we identify all that information. So we're asking members today to know our management progress update and that we'll be the EY over this audit to close some of these recommendations down. If anybody's got any questions.
Okay, Kevin.
Thank you, Ruth. Just a little question, going back to the members' interests. I've been on council three and a half years now, and in August was the first time I was asked to complete a new members' interest form. Does that reflect the work that's been put in, or does that reflect that at some stage over the past three years, I haven't been asked to complete a new, you know, members' interest form and declaration?
So the declaration interest form, members fill out on an annual basis or ensure that they've completed one, but if something changes in your personal circumstances, that form is meant to be updated at that point. So it's just making sure that that communication comes out from Democratic Member Services and members or then make sure that that form's updated, because we rely on that information to provide our related parties' disclosure notes.
Given that this first time, I've been specifically asked, and I was not aware of what the route was, then perhaps there is either some training or there's some communication that needs to go out to our members just to reinforce that and to demonstrate the route that we need to take.
I'll just, matter of interest, Tom, as newly elected this year, were you asked to fill in a declarations of interest form?
Yeah, within about five minutes of getting elected.
So I'm not sure what went wrong there. I don't know whether Jill, you want to comment on that?
Thank you. So on induction, we always make sure that the members have completed a register of interest form. The responsibility for keeping it up to date lies with the member, and we do try and prompt you on an annual basis. That's probably, I'm going to blame Covid on the fact that it hasn't happened over the last couple of years, the team's been stretched. But we did consciously decide this year to start that practice again so that we can make sure that we are helping members to keep their interests up to date. But they are supposed to be real time, they're live on the web and they are supposed to be updated as and when. So the annual prompt is just to make sure that we're keeping it as fresh as possible.
Yeah, just on that, can I confirm that? I remember when I did the induction in 2019, we had to fill in the forms, and then I clearly remember that it said in the pack that if anything changed, we needed to. But I suppose it's good to remind people, because we're not very good at remembering things, are we? But yeah, hopefully, we're going to be better at doing that from both sides.
Tom.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the report. With the 15 open observations from the last couple of years, obviously, EY will assess as part of this year's review if further action needs to be taken or if they can be closed. Are there any at this stage that you feel sufficient assurance can't be provided to say that they'll be closed this year?
I think some of them even are going to be recurring, so the PPE, even though we've addressed the specific actions in there, because it's the largest balance and there's always judgment and estimates within valuations, that EY might make further recommendations or improvements, and property services team are always looking to improve on that process. So even though EY might close that one down, it might reoccur as 2122. There's some that could be closed down straight away. Such as school balances, we did it on actuals, but they might reopen. But there's nothing that's standing out that's critical, that's fundamental, that we've not acted on, or there's a real weakness in internal control.
So just to be clear on that point, of the 15, how many of them are we confident that we can close of those 15?
I don't know, allow EY to answer this one, but, sorry, Kate.
I think it's difficult to say until we've gone through the final audit. However, what I will say is looking at, obviously, what the recommendation was, what the response is, and knowing the finance team from working with them over the past few audits, I'm assured that a high proportion will probably be closed out. As Ruth said, there is always the possibility of a new recommendation coming up, but we'd seek to close down old ones and raise new ones.
Thank you. I'd just like to tidy things up and get them off the books if we can, especially the ones that from previous years. My question relates to actually PFI, which officers agree with EY that PFI accounting models are very complex. A number of PFI contracts are going to come to an end, so I'm thinking of the schools, which further complication is most of those under PFI are academies. Has any thought been given to what happens at the end of the PFI 25-year contract in most cases, and what plans are in place for when that happens?
That's probably for me, Chair, rather than Ruth. Yes, we have started planning for the end of the first tranche of school PFI contracts. It's quite interesting, because we were towards the front of the queue when it came to PFI contracts, so as are some of the first that come to a natural conclusion. So there's a whole raft of considerations, going beyond the accounting, about how these facilities are going to be managed and run, once this initial period comes around. But the planning has certainly started for that. In fact, it started about a year ago, from memory, Chair, we had the first meetings to start, to kick off the work to do that.
Okay, thank you. I just know, I can foresee sort of complex negotiations with academy trusts and various things and whatever, but if we're assured that there are plans in progress, I'm satisfied on that point. Any other questions on this report, for anyone? If not, can we agree the recommendations that we know, the management's response on progress made to EY's prior year recommendations? Is that agreed? Agreed. Okay, thank you very much. Right, moving on to item nine on the agenda, which is the interim standards complaints report, which is, Jill, you're going to lead on this one.
I am, thank you, Chair. At the last, when I produced the last annual standards report in February 22, the committee requested that an interim report was brought on complaints, and this is your interim report. The report just, on page 65, just gives you a bit of an update on what's happening in the standards world at the moment and refers to the appointments of the independent persons who are with us today virtually. One of the things that, just close, 3.8 just points out as well, that one of the things that we considered as a panel, an interviewing panel, was that it might be helpful to get a more diverse range of independent persons. So we have tried, we've gone out and interviewed, sorry, advertised again to see if we can draw a wider pool for, so it might be that we are bringing a report saying that we want to add an extra independent person, et cetera, to our pool going forward. Now, I'll keep committee updated with that one, I won't, David will. Table, the table at 3.10 sets out what the complaint outcomes are, and at 3.12, you've got an explanation of the types of things, reasons as to why those outcomes would be reached. There were no referrals to hearing subcommittees within that six-month period as well. And that's it, Chair.
Thank you. It was perhaps remiss of me right at the start of the meeting to not welcome, especially Karen, to the first meeting here after appointing an independent person, and welcome back, David, after being reappointed. And thank you for your continued input to this and the joint appointments with Barnsley. There are two cases outstanding, and Jill, you, as the monitoring officer, will be leaving the Sheffield Council soon. Can I have your assurance that these cases have been passed on to the incoming? Can I have your assurance that these cases have been passed on to the incoming monitoring officer, David, and he's been involved in them?
Yeah, yes Chair, it's tomorrow is my last day and knowing that that was about to happen, those cases went immediately to my deputy who is David Hollis, who's with us today, who will be taking over in an interim role. So yes, there will be some continuity.
I think we just, for the record, I wanted to make sure that the Chair Joe will see us. Are there any other comments on this report? If not, thank you very much. Can we then just note the report, this case? Right, item 10 is the annual governance statement and there's a slightly amended report to come out, which I think was only just minor drafting amendments on this. And again, Jill, you taking this one?
Thank you Chair. Yes, there's on page 74 of your original report and page 78, there are two minor amendments that just correct, a couple of factual inaccuracies regarding the way we carry out our arrangements. It refers specifically to the chief exec's involvement in the senior leadership teams. She wants to make it clear that she's in one, not three of them, so we just wanted to correct the accuracy. So this report is your annual governance statement. As a local authority, we are required to, we have a duty to conduct at least annually a review of the effectiveness of our governance framework, including the system of internal control and publish an annual governance statement. It forms part of our statement of accounts, which you will receive later in the year. So the review of effectiveness, it's informed by the work of internal auditors and senior managers within the organisation and also we get comments from external auditors and any other agencies or inspectors that review us as an organisation. The first few pages set out how we, what our governance framework is and how it works. It refers, it identifies the fact that we have had a change of our formal governance in May 2022, but they say yes, because it's retrospective and relates to 202122 is around the period of time where our formal governance was strong leader and cabinet form of governance. So your first few pages describe how we govern or what our governance framework looks like and then on page 75, we move into how we have carried out a review of our effectiveness. As I said, this is something that's performed by senior officers within the council, taking into account various external agencies' comments. The outcome is, sorry, on page 79, it records the issues that the senior officer team consider and matters that identify some weaknesses in our internal control, but there was nothing that came out of the review that was so significant that they thought it needed to be included in the statement of account. So this is a practice we've adopted over the last few years. If there's something that we see as a theme that we think needs some monitoring, rather than it being a serious issue, we make sure that it's reported to the Audit and Standards Committee and then if you wish to continue to monitor that yourselves, you get the opportunity to do that. So on page 79, in the table, it sets out the two areas. One is relating to the way our human resources activities carried out within the council, the appraisal process for managers. It is recorded here as being, it's a recording process that needs to be simplified in order to help this issue. It is something that we have seen on here before, but there has been some different approaches being taken and our performance and development board, which is senior officer board, is taking a decision to monitor this and to push forward the performance on that outcome. So completion of mandatory learning is the other one and that's again something that we've seen previously. I did circulate or ge circulated to members some statistics, one councillor did ask if we could provide statistics, so you should have seen that to say what the levels of mandatory learning were for the organisation. They vary depending on the type of mandatory learning it is, whether it was the data protection ones around over 90%, some around equalities or more in the 60%. But overall, with the range, full range of mandatory learning, it's sitting at about 42% for the organisation, which we think is something that needs to be addressed. And again, the performance and development board are happy to take that forward. Establishment controls are, there's a lack of understanding of the entire establishment at any given time, so there is a plan to review and simplify this process in the coming months and again, P and E board will watch that. Information governance, there are a couple of things on here, but we have seen some of the areas that have been on here previously of, you know, we've made some advance on and we've made some improvements. One of the things that has been picked up by our delivery plan that was approved by Strategy and Resources Committee on the 30th of August, was our performance with regard to freedom of information and subject access requests and additional resources have been committed to helping us remove that backlog by the end of this financial year. And an update was provided to members, again came an email from Jay, from our head of information governance, just giving the committee information about where we're up to with that at the moment, an update on it. The retention and disposal schedules is part of the GDPR work and again, the work is done, it's, this is about putting automatic deletion dates on items and also having a record of that so that we can keep, so we can comply with our GDPR requirements. That work is almost there, it's nearly done, so whilst it was an issue last year, we're hoping it won't be this year. So the committee are asked to consider the report and as I mentioned Chair, it might be something that you know, you've got, you'd need to decide as a committee whether there's something you want, you might want another report on or you're happy for our senior officer board to maintain the responsibility for the improvement to these areas and to maybe take a commitment to report to you if there's, if they don't see an improvement, Chair.
I'll ask all the members of the committee, but I think at some point we want assurance reported back to us that the actions set out here had been successfully completed and if not, you report by exception which ones were unsuccessful, but I'm happy to take backup for that position from other members of the committee. I've got, Kevin?
Thank you Jill and thank you very much for sending the extra information. Sorry, I've been work all day, so I've not been able to, I've just looked at my emails. One thing I think we should note Chair, as the concern is the percentage of the staff that completes mandatory training, because that has gone down considerably because our target is 85% and we are on 42%, which is concerning itself, but it was 56% I think last time that I remember a percentage being given to us. So it would be interesting to see why people haven't got the, you know, probably people are just overworked and they haven't got the time, so what can we do as an organisation to ensure that people complete mandatory training if it's, you know, compulsory for the kind of jobs that they're doing? So just, I think it's something that we need to look at in a few months.
Okay, thank you. You did get the figures that were sent through later on, earlier on today and things, yeah. Kevin and Tom.
Two questions, but just leading on from what Angela said there. Do we remind members when the mandatory training period has come to the end and that they need to redo that training, because obviously that's a significant timeline where, and I know from, you know, from back at my ranch in terms of our system doesn't flag up to me when my mandatory training, I need to renew that. So do we send out those reminders? Is there flags in our training board system that remind people when their mandatory training is due to be redone? Because obviously those figures don't account for just new starters and we must have time periods for that training last fall. The other question I've got, and maybe Linda wants to comment as well, we've noted or you've noted there Jill, about the risk liability connected to maintain schools and in terms of them ensuring that school finance, health and safety, human resources and premises maintenance is undertaken and that that's obviously a risk for us because it's essentially it's third parties that's doing that, but do we provide code of practice, code of good practice to our maintained schools so that they're aware of not just our expectations, but what and how we expect them to do? I'm just thinking as well in your report Linda, and we got a much more detailed report sent through of two schools where we highlighted some really quite significant risks, but is it purely that we are not giving them the standards that we expect them to deliver to?
Yeah, I can answer that one. Yeah, when we do a school's audit, part of it that we do look at the code of conduct, but also does it have a lack of finance policy? So like I say, from those two reports that I mentioned in my report, that we give them a template to adopt and quite a lot of them do adopt that, so yeah, but that is part of our audit review as well. We look at the compliance to that and like I say, they have got some guides, so at least they're not starting with a bank sheet, they've got the standard template to look at.
But then do we actually, apart from the templates, do we provide them with a, you know, a code of practice in terms of the good practice that we expect them to hit?
Yeah, the schools have got, they've got the code of practice as well and obviously the teachers know like we've got our standards, they've also got professional standards as well, so yeah.
Okay, thank you. Tom now.
Thanks Chair. I support the recommendation that the performance and delivery boards should continue to monitor this, but perhaps rather than let them bring it to our attention, if they have concerns about any areas not being met, we might want to just book in in the spring perhaps, that we want to be assured that there is significant improvement on these measures. I just have a question about the, because we've got two kind of broad themes that have been flagged by the performance delivery board, one around HR, one around information governance and there's three sort of themes within each, yet only one has been, of the six, has been pulled out to be included in the delivery plan, which is FOIs. And that obviously has a, has a very external face to it and so there's an obvious reputational risk to the authority if we're seen to be underperforming on that, but in their own different ways, each of the six has a reputational risk if they're not met. So what was the criteria for pulling out that one to include in the delivery plan versus the others?
Thank you, that's a very good question. The, we have a requirement for regulatory compliance with freedom of information and SARS and with the Information Commissioner's Office is our regulator there. We are in danger of fines and also civil claims if we're not, so that's why it's being treated with slightly differently to the others.
Okay, I've got no other indications. The recommendations are set out on page 69, but taking up the issue that's been highlighted, could we add to the work programme a report back on the progress that's been made on these issues? And yeah, sometime in the, in the spring, sort of February, March time would seem appropriate. Okay, and that is agreed, I assume? Yes, thank you. We now come to item 11 on the agenda, which is the work programme. And if we look at page 88 on the work programme, we see the next scheduled meeting is 20th of October, where apart from work programmes, nothing's scheduled. I think we could, and I've already talked to our colleagues from Ernst Young about this, change that into our members briefing online with Ernst and Young rather than the formal meeting of the audit board. Seems as we've already got that in our diaries and there aren't any substantive issues on there, it seems an appropriate use of that time. Can we, I'm getting nods, so I'm assuming that people are agreeing with me on that point, so okay. Because we said at our previous meeting with Ernst Young that we were doing another members' one and we'll do that, so we'll make a note there. And I understand on the 17th of November, a couple of those reports may need to be moved back. Can I just have confirmation of that please?
Yes Chair, there's the statement of account report and the report to those charged, or the report to those charged with governance from the external auditors, the first two items on the list, if they can move to the January 2023 meeting please.
And I assume that doesn't give us any issues with timing or being over time with anything there?
That's correct Chair and it's also in line with the audit plan that Ernst and Young presented at this meeting.
Okay, so with those amendments, can we agree the work programme? Okay, thank you very much. And we must remember to bring a virtual birthday cake for Angela on the 20th of October to that meeting there. And then final item on the agenda 12, just to note the dates of the future meeting is going through to April 2023. And the very, very final item is our best wishes to Jill in her last meeting here, I don't know whether you've got any other formal meetings tomorrow, but it's your last day at the council tomorrow before you head back over the Pennines to Manchester Way. And thank you for your support to this committee and indeed all the other areas of the council over the years with Sheffield City Council and we wish you well, looking after the enemy, as it were, in Lancashire, yeah.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much and I now formally close the meeting.